Morning.
Where is I?
Not bad at this one.
Okay, I guess.
That's the start of recording, right?
Yeah, we're already recording now.
Again.
Got it. Well, it's six o'clock. Are you all saying anything?
So, I guess. I just put it in and we didn't have to.
Well, I'm gonna start because it's six o'clock. Good evening, it's six o'clock, so I'm gonna start the Town of Ledger Agricultural Commission meeting. At this point, I'm going to do a roll call. Chairman Bruce Gartska, who is here, Allison Angelini.
Present.
Russell Holmberg. And here, Mike Morelli.
Present.
Katie Uhas, I know she's at a wake. Bill Thorne.
Here.
Steve Martick.
Present.
At this point in time, I will seat Bill Thorne for Russell Holmberg, and I will seat Steve Martick for Katie Uhas. Also present is Councillor Naomi Rodriguez. Are there any citizen comments? Hearing none, are there any comments from the commission members? Hearing none, any informational items that anybody would like to share?
Farmer's Market starts on one June.
Okay, and that was Bill Thorne saves Farmer's Market starts on the first of June, which we and that's going to be at the lower green.
Yeah, lower green, same places as last year without all the COVID stuff.
Yeah. That's a lot.
Last year was a lot better than the year before.
Okay. At this point.
Yes.
No else. Are there any? I'm going to be reviewing the minutes, are there any comments from public? Hearing none, are there any comments from the commission members?
Double. On your computer.
Hearing none. I will entertain a motion for someone to approve the minutes as distributed.
I'll make motion to approve the minutes as distributed.
So, second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the minutes as distributed. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none, motion carries unanimously.
Was that seconded by Bill Thorne?
Yes, it was.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Old business, is there any old business to come before the commission? Hey, Russell. Okay. At this point, I'd like to say that Russell Holmberg has joined the the meeting and who's Russell, were you Russell Bill?
I think I was.
Okay, so Russell's in the meeting and Bill is now the alternate.
Oh, man, I hope you enjoyed your time.
Yeah, it was just so stimulating.
Is there any other old business to come before the commission? Hearing none, new business. We met with some local farmers, both Mike Morelli and I, and then Bill Thorne and I met with one was from the Mystic Valley Hunt Club, and we had quite, quite the discussion. One thing that they, that we brought away from the meeting was that they are interested in the ADUs and in her in particular because she's got 165 acre horse farm there, and she would definitely like to have an accessory dwelling unit to help her, her farm hands and be right on the, on the farm site with their animals. That was one of the big takeaways from that.
Which I guess was also.
That's Bill Thorne.
I'm sorry, it was also one of Paul's.
Yeah.
Issues as well. He needs have that help that is too expensive to bring in because the housing costs are so high here, you know, especially on a temporary basis.
Right.
Yeah, that's something that had come up with the zoning.
That's Russell Holmberg.
Oh, yeah, sorry, Russell. The real Russell Holmberg. Yeah, I had to come up with zoning stuff, and so there's been carve outs for ag, there's so much precedent there, it's a program we take advantage of. And then there was for a while this 50 acre or above exemption burning you. But where I think we left that off was that's all kind of, it got stood on its head with the zoning changes, just bringing up the speed that then it's, it's slowly making its way through the community, I hear more and more about it with that state level, I guess there's a mandate that anybody can have to ride here. So, I don't even know, does anybody know where that stands? We move to town if we've got a vote on that, and that's kind of divisive.
At this point, we, we don't. The state says you can have them, but it's still up to the town to decide how it's implemented.
Right, from what I understand, they're still discussing it, they're going to hold like public workshops.
Yeah.
There'll be a public hearing. Don't know where they're gonna move on from there.
Okay, that was, that was Mike Morelli.
You're talking about, just Bill Thorne, you're talking about the, our zoning. It's happened, I have some meetings to address it, because I understood the same thing, it's sort of been given a blessing at the state level.
Yes.
And, you know, it's sort of like now it's sort of like we're standing in the way.
Well, yeah, that, yeah, that'd be, but, but lots of towns, Russell Holmberg, I had my understanding is lots of towns are saying, hey, like this doesn't make sense, and in a lot of areas in this town, I can see why it wouldn't, and some areas where it would, but where, where it definitely would, would be agriculture, especially, I mean, the carve outs were always for larger parcels. The things that zoning worries about are usually, usually find a spot, and I think that's why they had the ADU for a horse farm, which might have even bought a Mystic Valley Hunt Club, it was somewhere down there, I think, somewhere, I might be wrong.
There's one, Bruce Gartska, there was one that was, that's since I think the lady passed away.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
So, they had, they had written, you know, like the way it goes, like they needed the change, zoning said, well, entertain it, I think they had a lawyer draft it thing, and it went for approval and they got approved for it, and it existed for like 10 years or so, and then there was zoning rewrite simplification, and my understanding was, is it was just kind of like, is anybody doing this? No, no, all right, we get rid of this, kind of thing, like that's how these things happen, so you gotta go through the whole process to get it back in there again. We use an ADU structure, our farm, same deal, my dad was like a little younger than I was and went to zoning and got it passed, and then it kind of went away, and we just got a knock on the door from our zoning officer one day, and he was like, hey, I was looking at the drags, and all of a sudden, you're not compliant, but there's a paper trail here, so here's, we have a certificate of compliance, he's like, you didn't do anything wrong, but you know, it just went away, so this is a problem that things go, you know, there's opportunity, and they just kind of go away one day, they don't call and tell you.
But I think this is, this is Bill Thorne, I mean, this is sort of the exact kind of thing that we're here for, to kind of look into and, and you know, sort of grind this down to the, to the, find out what's going on.
Yeah.
And maybe help facilitate moving things along, and I agree that I think, you know, you know, five acre farm is probably not appropriate, but if you're a hundred acre plus farm, maybe it's, it's appropriate, but, but something, you know, makes sense.
This is Mike, like I was telling everybody. Zoning Commission is looking at rewriting all of the regulations, all right, a lot of it pertains to agriculture, I recommend everybody go look at it and read what it is, because there's a lot of items, I highlighted some of them, one of the ones that they're talking about is on a farm lot and 10 acres, they're gonna allow housing for workers.
Yeah.
All right, this is gonna be put, and that'll be by right, because you're a farm, all righty, so that'll address that, but there's a lot of other things on there, there's a lot of other regulations, most of them are pretty much like agricultural subcommittee.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, a lot pertaining to what size for large events, small events, what's gonna be required, things of that nature there.
But, Mr. Bill Thorne, where did that subcommittee, where did it go? Because I, that's the last thing I really read, was the recommendations from the subcommittee to the planning and zoning, that was the last thing I really read, I, it seemed like it just came to an end, it didn't.
I think, Mike, really, I think what you're gonna see is a lot of the suggestions that were made already are going to be incorporated on the new zoning regulations they've got under consideration, like all these things about these kind of setbacks and things that need to, that's all the.
Yeah, I remember, that was one of your recommendations.
So, a lot of these recommendations that you made, and they are going to be incorporated.
That's good to hear, because I didn't realize, it seemed like nothing was happening with the recommendations that they made, so that's good to hear.
Dear, dear, Russell Holmberg here, I, my understanding was, or was, anyway, I'm certain that when a committee or a committee of any sorts makes any kind of recommendation, it has to go through a county employee and then the county lawyer, and that takes a lot of time, so we turned that over in like, hey, April, something like that, and then it was gonna take a period of months for everybody to look through that, and they're gonna cut where they see fit, I mean, they're the experts, so they're gonna make those adjustments, and then, and then zoning was, the zoning board was pretty dynamic over the winter time, I don't know if anybody followed that, but there was, there was a lot of motion there, and I think that my, my guess would be that they were just kind of trying to focus on, you know, keeping everybody intact and moving forward, kind of thing, and some of that stuff might, it might, it might have not made a lot of progress for a couple months there, until they can kind of get everything kind of stabilized, again, you know, new chairperson, things like that, I mean, that's a lot of work for a committee to kind of reorganize themselves.
This is Bill Thorne, but what I remember when talking to the town council, I had to move through, it really wasn't approval. No, they did, no, they did, but, but the way I gotta explain to me from people in the council is, we're not really approving it, these are, all we're saying is.
Accepted.
That's the right word, accepted it and passed it on to planning and zoning as recommendations.
Right.
So, anyway, I, I think it'd be, that'd be interesting to, and maybe it's not just limited to this, you know, this auxiliary housing thing, maybe we should be looking more at the big picture, especially if it's already in, in there, just, I need to become more familiar with where that is at.
So, yeah, and then one, one more thing there is just in, just a word of caution to anybody in the room or in the audience that whenever the town makes a change, when things go away like I described, that's a burden on the town, they have to come out and say, hey, we did this, and we said you were compliant at the time, you're, you're not compliant, but that's our fault, here's a cert, that's, that's no problem, but to make changes that impact people, you have, they have to, there has to be public hearings, there has to be public notice before the public hearings, and then there's a petition period after the public meeting, there's, there is a wide swath of time, at which point, if you're an affected party, you have a clearinghouse to say, hey, I'm an affected party, we need to change this, or we need an exemption, or there needs to be something to be there, so, so there is hope there, that it's not just, hopefully it's not.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not really saying that. But anyways, you're right.
I got time. Another recommendation from Mystic Valley Hunt Club and Sally there is, because they're a horse farm, they like the idea of being accessible to the trails and the greenways, so, so that's something that the town could look at when they're, they're doing their planning, I know the tri-town trail comes through that area, so that was one of her suggestions as well, is to maybe focus on areas where you could have a greenway that would, would approach their farm, that would, that would enhance their businesses as time goes on, so that was another one of her, her points that she, she would like to see. And that's, that was it from Mystic Valley Hunt Club, and then we also met with Paul Mogul, Mogul Sierra Vineyard, and, and he had, he had some comments as well, most notably, he was very interested in the town being able to, well, let the businesses put up directional signs, and I, I know if they're on state road, you have to go through the state or town, you have to go through the town, but he was, he, he thought that directional signs would really help the local farmers with the businesses, if you're coming down on Route 12, for instance, if you're, if you're at the Mokey Gump Bridge, and you have to sign this as Holmberg's, or to take a right, go, go a mile, something of that nature, or if you're on two, 117 and two way, and you say Mogul Sierra winery up this way, so I, I think there's, there's value in listening to that and probably trying to get directional signs, see where we can go from there, so that's another consideration.
And this Bill Thorne, I think he was talking principally about town sign poles, so this would be a town issue, I know when you get the state involved, it becomes very complicated, but, you know, so I think he's saying, you know, can we just, and he had some examples of people that came into his winery who are local and didn't know they were there, he sort of said, oh, I had no idea you guys were here, I don't know how that is exactly, they got right by it, but that's what he said, you know, so.
And he, and Bruce Gartska, and he was also mentioning how the signs could be unlike the, like you say, that, that the town, even on the, on the street signs, for instance, where they intersect with the roads.
Yeah.
So.
It becomes complicated when the state's involved, but they get, to get the town to just, and his comment was, you know, he gave an example of Killingley and where they have signs, I mean, not just farms, but, you know, a lawyer's office, and it's attached just below the, the town name for the road, it's attached just below, and according to him, I, I'm still trying to get some exact details, but it's, the signs made for by the business, we really didn't talk about installation, maybe it's cost, but, but, you know, it's not a cost to the town to where the sign is.
And it's not, it wasn't a bulky sign either.
No, no, it's the same size as a regular sign, you know, that's up there for the road.
But it was a different color, so it caught your eye.
Yeah, I think it was brown instead of.
Yeah, green, yeah, but it caught your eye.
Mike Morelli again. Signage, they're addressing that in these new regulations they're proposing, and they are having, they're proposing new regulations for signage, so it can direct people to different businesses, so that's another thing that they're talking about on there. So, there's a whole number of things that we're discussing here this evening that are going, that they're gonna think about incorporating in the zoning regulations. So, does everybody know how to find it? So, you can read it, and take a look at them, and think what you like, what you don't like, what we could put extra, and stuff like that, so we could bring it to the next meeting and say, okay, maybe we start attending, start following zoning and planning and zoning a little closer.
Yeah.
Maybe start going to meetings, something like that, to address things. Are they meeting, I'm sorry, are they meeting in person, they used to go to their meetings, do you know that? I believe everybody could be out now, unless there's some extenuating circumstances. I think it was explained to me, let's, well, I'm not gonna get it now, let's say it was blizzard.
Sure.
You could go back to the Zoom, but they would like to see everything hybrid now, so yes, I think there will be some, and in order to have a hybrid meeting, you have to have a certain amount of people.
Ours is two, by the way.
Oh, okay. Conservation's three. You know, I mean, I'm not sure what, you know, the other ones are.
Okay.
You know what I mean, but there's like a lot of questions, like, I don't see where they address, like, proposals, you know, like Allison has, that's too big, addressing that, I think, thinks it needs more clarification on, it says you can have accessory buildings on the farm, but really it's not clarified as to what you follow, do you see what I mean, in other words, is there, I can't find special circumstances, you know, governing them, do you have it by right, or, so there's some, some things that needs clarification. So some, some things that needs clarification, that I think everybody should take a look at. One of the things I love is new home hunting stuff, oh, they like that, real nice. The only thing is they say it's non-commercial. So you had a dozen eggs that put out front and cooler or some jetties, honey. So suppose you can, but that's another subject, but some things like that, you know, uh. The farm store, they also took that thing where it doesn't have to be produced on that farm, it's just local farms. Find local, Eastern Connecticut. I don't, you know what I mean? So there's a lot in there, I think that we all need to look at, write down some ideas and come to a next meeting.
Where is, I'll see Mike, where is this?
You go, you go into the town legend.
Yep.
Go into meetings, right, go down planning and zoning, and what you'll do is you go down to, uh, any of their meetings. The last meeting they had, I think it was the twelfth. And you'll have, uh, it'll have like agenda, have like either video or minutes, and there's another category, trying to remember the name. Click on that packet, yes, the agenda packet, you click on that and you'll find it. You'll have a whole list of all the ones that they're thinking of discussing and proposing.
Just, this is a kind of a side.
Bill Thornt.
Yep. Nate, is Nate?
No.
He's off?
Yes.
Um, yeah. So, I mean, that's, I think that's right, but it was interesting because, um. When Allison was trying to put in these hoop houses, which are basically just something over fields or she doesn't start. You know, I don't know this for a fact, but she claimed that that was considered by the state of Connecticut through the. Standard farm operating. Procedures or whatever you want, I mean, they were, you know, sort of, so, yeah, we were running contrary to. You know, sort of what, where the state is going, I mean, you just talked about the auxiliary dwelling units, the state's sort of giving some guidance. That later where, where Paul was trying to get, uh, you know, the craft beverages on her permit, that was already addressed by the state. And we were kinda like, even though it was, you know, I mean, I always consider the state as the, the sort of the people that hold back, but they were, you know, saying, yeah, go ahead. This is okay for farms and everything, it seems like we're not even on the same page in some cases that, that the state's on.
I, I think that's changing.
Yeah, also, but also regulations forever have been purviewed to local regulations, in fact, when, when I pulled the same permits that he did. The every last page of that says, subject to supervision of your, of your government.
I get it, same with this tax exempt, but I mean. Why are we, why are we resisting, I guess is the question.
Where, where we left with the act committee was, there was no resistance there, so there was the, the, the adoption of the, and they, with the, this. There's no state regulations, say the definition of agriculture, it's a, it's on any legal thing, have definitions, implementation of the law, just like we do. The state definition may or may not have included hoop houses, the, the, um, the, um. Recommendations of the committee, I almost am certain the town's definition included. Structures such as hoop houses, I'm almost positive.
Your recommendations.
Yeah, I, I, I believe that's the case.
Yeah, I agree.
Moving forward, but then, but how, things like that, that's tough, that's all it comes down to like interpretation. And we start getting into regulations like that, it's like, huh, how much do you wanna really start to pin it down? And how much do you wanna leave in the interpretation of the Z E O, cause I, I've had candid conversations with. Former zoning officials in town, and they were like hoop houses, we wrote those, here's the deal, why there's a thing about hoop houses, it's not for greenhouse structures, it's for portable garages. And, and it's only when somebody started asking the question that somebody's like, oh, we hadn't even thought about that, I guess we can address it if you want. But like that, what was my understanding was is that what was happening with hoop houses is that you had people with, like, repair shops springing up with all these quantity cuts in their yard. It didn't have anything to do with agriculture, it wasn't built like, well, I guess we'll take a look at it. Just a good case in point of like, sometimes asking the question, all of a sudden it just kind of blew something up that was never an issue.
Yeah, this is, this is Allison Angelini, I just wanted to.
You're what we're talking about.
Yeah, I feel like I should type in because everyone's talking about me.
You're waving. Yep.
Um, so I think what Bill was, had, you know, was talking about, we have nine, um, they're called seasonal high tunnels. And, and the distinction is that they're temporary movable structures used for in-ground growing. So, uh, and, uh, of the nine, five of them were partially funded by the Natural Resource Conservation Services because. Of the way that they help us to manage our water systems on the farm. And. They're a really good thing and they, they are truly temporary, like if you were to say, I need them all down by the end of the week, and like. I could pull them all down in a weekend. And, and aside from rebar holes, that's all you would see in the ground, but, you know, to Russell's point. There's still structures and mine are, you know, used for growing organic vegetables and they're clear and, you know, they have a relatively low profile because of the shape of our farm, but. You know, it's a, it is like kind of a slippery slope because each, each of the structures is bigger than our house, which is one of the hurdles that we, we had had. Um, in construction, in working with the town, you know, their buildings. And so we've struggled with floodlight to get exemptions, to not have septic tanks and, uh, that sort of thing with them. But, you know, Russell said it's a slippery slope, cause it wouldn't be that hard to pour a concrete pad in it and, uh. Add a heater and turn it into a greenhouse or, um. Do any number of other things that, that people do to those huts that sort of pull them away from that. Very temporary nature into a more permanent, you know, more of a, a building type thing, and so. That, that's where the discussion comes into play is like, where do we draw the line and what, you know, where are they appropriate? So that, that's the, that's sort of the two sides of the situation is, as I see them is like. You know, not, not everyone utilizes the structures how I do. And maybe that matters, but maybe it doesn't.
Allison, this is Bill Thornt, I, you once told me that it's, it's common agricultural practice, right? And, I mean, that's where I'm sort of getting, where you're talking about the garage thing and everything, different, I mean, we're talking agriculture.
Right.
And if it's, you know, if, if it's a common agricultural practice. Then we should be, you know, looking at it differently than, we shouldn't be looking at the same guy that's trying to put a bunch of antique cars, you know, who can jet on his garage in his property, that's different. In my experience.
I know, but I think like, you know, what the, what the ad committee discussed endlessly is like, what constitutes a farm? Because, you know, at the meeting that I. Last attended for, you know, I had to get a special permit to put up the most recent tunnel that we installed, which is quite expensive. You know, I was at, I was at the meeting with another person looking for, um, approval to put up a barn for, on their farm, but. You know, the farm is not what, you know, in my personal opinion, a farm, it's not producing an agricultural product. The barn is used to hold boats and cars, which I wouldn't consider useful in an agricultural enterprise, and so, you know, it's just. It's just not that simple. Until there's like a really solid definition of, of a farm that's inclusive of the variety of farms that Ledger has from. You know, sea, you know, oyster farms to horse farms to vineyards and orchards and. Tiny vegetable farms and huge nurseries. You know, I mean. Bill, you walk our neighborhood every day, you know how many structures are behind. Your house, you know, I mean, it's just, what, you know, it's just not, not simple, unfortunately, and I think that's.
We have a P four ninety list that gives people tax exemptions because they're farms, I mean, that might be a good place to start. It's say, you're a farm and you're not a farm, cause I mean, I mean, at least those, at least that list should be a starting. I don't know, I just, I, I understand the issues, I understand, but this is Paul's frustration, what we're just talking about here, you know? And, and I understand what you're saying, but, you know, I wanna put a hoop containment on my property to store my sixty-seven Chevy. Isn't the same thing as putting a hoop farm on a, I mean, putting a hoop on a farm so you can raise vegetables. That's, I mean, agriculture, it can be put in a residential because, so, because it's considered, you know, legitimate use. But I think that's the thing, maybe we can have trouble defining a farm, but we do have a, we do give a lot of tax exemptions, exemptions for farms, so I think that would be a starting point right there. If no place else, so, I, I, I don't know, it just doesn't seem that hard to me, because we, I think we make it hard, I think we make it hard, is what we do.
The example you used with the hoop houses was, um, so I, I have degree in horticulture, I took college classes in greenhouse construction and like. The semester one, they're like, greenhouses, it's a tough one, this is, this was, I took that class in two thousand and two. And they're like, yeah, it's a tough one, uh, you're gonna have to probably pull, pull a building permit and all the towns draw their lines somewhere else. And I remember I had this slide in my head, I can picture it, where they're like, yep, hoop houses, some, somehow, some houses take them, some don'ts. It ebbs and flows and he's, one, one guy's solution was he was dropping, he was setting the posts, yeah, to his greenhouse to nursery pots. Because it was, they, they were like, this is removable at this point because you can pick the whole thing up, up again. Talking conversations with the farm bureau, they're like, yep, it's one of those things that's town to town and it's decade to decade as far as where it kind of ebbs and flows. We, we, we used to live closer to the shore and Old Line was in the middle of, oh God, this was probably twenty-ten, in the middle of a big thing about hoop houses. Like, it just pops up and it wasn't about greenhouses at all, it was about movable structures and a woman was had a fit, cause she had a beautiful property in Old Line and. There, um, there was a bent steel structure that somebody was using for, for car storage and it wasn't permanent or semi-permanent enough, so they put wheels under it. She had a fit, it went all the way up the state, it was a big mess and this stuff just kind of bubbles up and, and I, I don't know, I don't, I don't, I'm just, I don't know how to handle it. Like I said, it just seemed like everybody I've talked to has been around, it's just kind of like less is more, like, just kind of let it, let that one lie, kind of thing, so. I don't, I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, I think.
Well, Allison.
I think the other thing, Bill, to remember is like. You know, zoning isn't necessarily a policing organization, and so. The goal of what they're trying to do, again, in my opinion, with some of these regulations. And I'm trying, you know, I try so hard because obviously I have very strong personal opinions about how my farm fits into the community. But, you know, from a zoning perspective, I think they're also, you know, they're trying to create regulation that like. Is for the land, not necessarily for a business, so, so, you know, using my property as an example, like. If I had zoning approval to put up. Ten high tunnel, seasonal high tunnels like I have, and then. My business ceased to operate or it shrunk down and then I use those structures for storing. Boats or whatever people want to do with them, like. How does that work with zoning, you know, technically we're still a farm, technically we've put up approved structures, like. Technically, we're not like subject to policing by zoning, but we're not using them for, you know, you know, I, I, yeah, I just. I agree with you, I wish it was so simple, but I also like, wish that everyone just followed the rules and they don't all the time, just. Is why, um, why there are problems and why there are people who are working to carefully phrase. The regulations so that they don't hinder businesses that already exist, but they try and minimize people who are, are, are. You know, would potentially abuse. Abuse the structures and, and, and change the, the way that they're imagining the town, you know, our town would look.
Allison, I completely agree with you, it was, that's exactly how it was explained to me by, uh, the farm bureau, who's our advocacy organization. That, that, that all of these are so fraught with, with abuse, that you have to kind of, sometimes it's a grinning bear to do the right thing. Cause there's ten more people waiting in line to stretch and bend with the rules, it's unfortunate, it's human nature.
That's a spell form, but I mean, I could put a shed and get a permit to put a shed in, and next thing you know, I got somebody living in it. I mean, courses, you can always change the use. They had a use for the permit, but when you apply for the permit and you apply for it as a hoop house to grow vegetables on a farm that's, you know.
Existing.
Existing and one of it, that, you can't say, well, they might abuse it, well, people, yeah, they might abuse it, and you can say that for every zone. I mean, how many houses do we have that are, you know, single family that have multiple families living in it right now, a lot? So, you know, and, and is it, so I, I think that's a weak excuse to say somebody might abuse it downstream. I'm just saying, I think as the farm commission, I mean, that's, I think, to get involved in some of this thing and some of these might be a, you know, an area that. And like I said, I always thought that one of our missions should be, you know, to advocate for the farmers who are dealing with the town, between the town. And the farmer who's trying to do the right thing, I mean, I wouldn't jump on somebody who's gonna build a hoop house, you know, like I said, put a garage in it. But I would for somebody who's trying to, you know, make a living as a farmer, that's, it's tough.
Well, I, I like the idea Mike had is to review the planning and zoning recommendations and then we can discuss that at the next meeting because. Yeah, you know, I think we can discuss this for long, for, forever, so like, let's just see the direction they're going and then we can make adjustments there. Uh, at that point, is there any other new business to come before the council? I know we're still gonna check on farms and farmers, uh, so.
All right, just, there are a couple of things that Paul also, and you probably interest in this. You know, the state, a lot, this is one of the things you said, the state allows it, but it has to be agreed in the municipality, said for farm equipment, you know, tax exempt, farm equipment. Not just buildings, state allows it, but, but Ledger has decided only. Property not equipped is tax exempt.
There's, there is equipment exemption.
Yes, there's a hundred dollar equipment exemption and there's, there's, um, the same form is something with horses that I, I'm not, I don't have horses, so I'm not familiar with, but we file. We notaried, have the form notarized and filed every October.
I'm sorry, Allison, I didn't hear the, this Bruce Garcia, I didn't hear the amount for the exemption for the machinery? Did you say?
I believe it's a hundred thousand, is that what you think is true, Russell?
Yeah, I'm like, thanks, thanks for the backing up there, cause I was like, did something change?
Yeah, I think it's a hundred thousand for buildings, correct?
It's not for buildings, it's farm equipment and machine.
Okay, well, we need to figure that out.
We have been work.
I thought it was also for barns, uh, I think that's one of the reasons they did that, but I could be mistaken on that.
I'm biting my tongue because we. When I walked that in last year, there was a change and I don't want to miss a week, but I was like, uh, there's a change here and. When we filed our taxes, it's like, it should have gone, he should have realized his savings last year, I don't, he might have missed something there.
Well, he just gave an example, this Bill Thornt, he just gave an example, he'd like to go out and buy a new tractor to spray, to do spraying and I guess it requires a closed cab and all that. And he says, you know, it's a hundred and fifty, hundred and seventy thousand dollar piece of equipment and, you know.
You, you can spend whatever you want, Paul, you don't have to.
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I think the feeling is that, you know.
He was just looking for the exemption for the machinery, that's why, why pay every year.
I agree, I think it's a hundred thousand.
Hundred, hundred, hundred grand per tractor and a sprayer goes pretty quick, that's for sure. A hundred grand per tractor these days goes pretty quick, um, not that you have to spend that, but you certainly can. So, but, yeah, there were some changes there and I don't have the numbers, there was definitely, there's definitely some changes there, I don't have the numbers to add, but I, I remember. A back and forth when we went to file that and I was like, it's changed, and she's like, oh, yes, it did, let's look at that.
I'll look into that and figure out what to do.
Yeah, another point that Paul had made is that, uh, he said with the agricultural commission, it'd be nice, uh, you know, if there was more a, a, a. A give and take between different farmers, like, say for instance, uh, you're looking for insurance, you could just put a little blip out there, who's your insurance agent or are they good or something like that? Uh, or where do you, where do you get your, your fertilizer, who's got the best price around, kind of an informational hub as well. So I think that was another suggestion that he had.
Don't know about how they feel about Facebook, if you can have. Don't know about how they feel about Facebook, but you can have a Facebook page that has members only. You're saying, you know what I mean? A group, so it's not open to the public. So if you wanted to use that.
Yeah, I think that's what he's looking at is maybe maybe have something developed or whatever, where you could get on there and, you know, say, hey, I'm looking for insurance. My insurance just went up like crazy. And that was an example that he gave, a friend of his, and he told him who it was and saved him all sorts of money. So I think it's just another option that where we could be an asset to farmers.
I volunteer Eastern Connecticut BTB Association, right? Fifteen dollars a year. But you have to be a member.
Yeah, we we have a, we have the checks we've got for professional organizations that work fifteen or twenty of them, but principally Farm Bureau will get you in most of that. And I think that's kind of a better exhibit of that. And be like, hey, Paul, I might want to, if you're not involved with Farm Bureau, you might want to look at that. That seems to be a good one. As far as trying to recreate that at our scale, it seems to be none of that, when there's a lot of I think many winery association will help out with that. I mean, there's the Farm Ag, I mean, there's so many resources out there that can be redundant for us.
Yeah, this is Bill Thornt. He he actually is a member. He's actually recommending that we become a member.
Of the Farm Bureau, correct?
Yeah. And I don't think he, I don't think it's possible to associate.
Yeah, he he said it was minimal, but he said there's a lot of good useful information and you can get an idea of what other towns are dealing with. You know, as opposed to trying to reach out to the towns and everything. So I think, I don't know if we can, what we would have to do to do that. I mean, I tell you what, I'll look into it and see what the cost is and get back to.
Either that, or I could shoot an email. I I already got it, I already got an email from, and I told her we were meeting this morning.
Sorry.
And then I get back to where I'm at.
All right, minimal cost.
Yeah.
We have a budget.
We do?
Yeah.
I'm the treasurer. You were the treasurer for a couple of minutes, son, do you remember it? You're like a treasurer for a couple.
Okay, is there any other new business?
All right, one question I have. Are we gonna continue to do this interviewing, talking to farmers?
Yes. I mean, I would like to. I've got a couple, I've got a, I've got a call out and, you know, I'm still waiting back for two calls, but I think it's good. It just gives you an idea of where they stand.
Yeah, I mean, just, I mean, obviously, we hit two of the big ones.
Yeah.
Have you talked to anybody from Pride's?
No, not yet.
They must have tripled, no, more, four times the number of greenhouses back there than they had back there. And I'm going, where's the town? Give, give, give poor Allison all this trouble over the hoop houses and they're just putting up greenhouses like crazy back there.
Yeah, well, if you're, so if you those guys know how to do stuff, if they're, they're doing ag in town and it's like, oh, how do you do this? They know, they work in, they work in towns all over the state. They're just gonna get it done like.
That's a good resource. Yeah, I think that's one of the ones we'll hit next time.
I would chat with those guys. That's it. They're, as far as I know, they're the biggest in the state as far as net sales or gross sales.
Wow. Is there any other business?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Bill Thornt made a motion to adjourn. I'll accept a second.
I'll second it, Mike Morley.
Mike Morley, second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So carried unanimously. The meeting of the May Ledger Agricultural Commission has ended at six forty-three. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. I'll look into that tax thing.